This is the special meeting for the LSC. And we have on the agenda, the roll call. So as I call your name, please introduce yourself and your function on the council. Marilyn.
Hi, Marilyn Rosario Caro, staff rep.
Mac.
Mac Laboon, community representative.
Lori.
Lori Veets, parent rep.
Nick.
Nick Hall, teacher rep.
Kate.
Kate Kaczynski, parent rep.
Mira.
Mira Weber, principal.
Sarah.
Sarah Ograto, parent rep.
Cindy.
Cindy Watola, parent rep.
Emily.
Emily Holbert, teacher rep.
Kirsten.
Kirsten Clay, parent reps.
Did I get everyone? I think I did. Okay, my name is Tina Holder King. I'm a parent rep. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Nick. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion?
I'm sorry, who seconded the agenda?
That was, I think it was a tie between Mac and Marilyn, maybe? Is there any discussion regarding the agenda? Okay, we will take it to a vote. Please use the raise hand icon on your screen to make it easier for counting. Those in favor of putting the agenda as provided, please raise hand. Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, Sarah, do you have the count?
Um, Mac, you didn't put your hand down and wasn't sure where you stood on the vote. Um, I know you was at four.
Yeah, sorry, I tried to put it after four.
That's okay. Uh, it's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. The agenda is approved as provided prior to the meeting. The next item on the agenda is the principal presentation. Um, Mira, however you want to go about this, take it away.
Thank you. I will start. I'm going to share my screen. And LSC did have a chance to review this ahead of time, so there may be things that we're talking through. I'm going to do my best to switch between tabs as I share different, um, different pieces of the presentation. So just bear with me as we, uh, as I go through that. Does everyone see the screen now? Okay, so let me just switch it to present mode. Okay, so as many people know, uh, the CIWP is a two-year document that every Chicago public school crafts to help guide instructional decisions and budgetary decisions. And so we are technically in the second year of our CIWP. Um, but obviously due to the pandemic and everything else in the world, many of the items that we were set to work on or were working on have been shifted or, um, needed some adjustments. So we have had an extremely collaborative and rigorous, uh, process reviewing this current CIWP to make it a strong plan for the next school year. Um, and then at the end of the next school year, we do write a new plan for the following two years after that. So I do want to thank the members who were part of that team. Um, Tina, Patty Lenkov, uh, both served as parents on that team. Shrag Metta, um, for some time also served on that team. And then multiple staff members, um, Mr. Hall, Ms. Wallace, Ms. Brown Rivera, uh, Ms. Perillis, Ms. McNally, Mr. Collins. So there was, there was a lot of eyes and, um, ears on the discussions and on the document itself. And throughout the process, also, um, grade level teams of staff reviewed it and provided feedback.
I'm sorry, Mira, to interrupt, um, but are you recording?
Of course not. Hold on. Why would I be doing that? Hello, Tina. All right. Uh, it's thinking. Yep, I am now. All right, um, so just to piggyback off of the CIWP and its connection to the budget, our current mission and vision statement are really embedded throughout the work plan and as we know, are also pieces of what will be updated as part of this plan with the equity work we're doing and post renaming and the different values that were identified throughout that process. So, uh, continuous improvement work plan is really created using school data and identifies goals and specific strategies to help us meet those goals and it drives the school budget planning. So the rationale behind reviewing the CIWP first is to get a groundwork and a framework before going into budget to show the alignment between the two. And the budget should really align to the different needs set forth in the CIWP, knowing that not all action items will require funding per se, but those that do should directly correlate. So you'll see here, um, in our CIWP, we have four strategies and these four strategies, uh, have remained the same from when we crafted this last spring. However, what did change, um, is some language within embedded in the strategies around specific equity work. And we decided instead of adding an equity strategy of its own, the team really decided that to show a true and concerted effort to be a more equitable school environment, we embedded the language and the concepts um, within all the strategies and action items instead of having it be its, its own separate entity. Um, we felt that way it would be a nice, you know, tie to everything else that we're doing and it really should be embedded anyway. So we decided to create, um, language specific to equity priorities throughout the document. So the different, um, action items. So each strategy has a different set of action items. We have a social emotional learning strategy, a multi-tiered systems of support, student voice and engagement and curriculum. Not going to read them all to you. I'm sure you can all see them and this will be posted on the website and shared as well. Um, but what you can see is if you click on these links. So for example, this is social emotional learning and all of this will be embedded when it's shared as well, is that each strategy has specific action items attached as well as the responsible party for completing those action items and the timeline for which they'd be completed. What I will say is that, um, the timeline is, is very rigorous and, and very intense because now it's turned from a two-year plan into a one-year plan. So the, the part of the CIWP that is important to remember is it is a living document and can be updated, revised, or adapted at any time. And I do envision certainly depending on where we are in fall and what fall is going to look like, that this plan may not be completed by spring of 2022, which I think is completely fine. Um, and I think we would all agree, we want to do it well, not just get through it. And certainly to do justice to the thought, uh, that went into creating the document, I would hope that, um, everyone, everyone would agree. So then what we did, we added something this year, um, I believe from LSC's recommendations is a timeline. Instead of looking at everything as separate strategies with all these due dates, uh, we added a timeline component. So you can see here, it's broken down by spring of 2021 where we currently are, summer, fall, winter, and then spring 2022, which would bring us to next spring when we are recreating um, a new CIWP. Although to be honest, I think some of what's in the current one will probably roll into the next one as well. Sorry about that. So there we go. I think it moved off present mode. I'm sorry. All right. So from there, you start to see the, um, different funding sources. And this is where, I don't know why it keeps doing that. This is where I'm going to break down for everybody, the discretionary funding sources, which is the money we get for student-based budgeting, which is a certain dollar amount per student. Student aid, which is calculated by the state, title
Mira, just, Mira, sorry to interrupt, just so you know, you're no longer sharing that slot. I think when you flipped over to the different tab, story of my life.
Yeah, I don't know why it's doing that. I don't know why it's doing that though. The problem is it won't let me go into present mode. Hold on, let me try again. I'm sorry, guys. Bear with me here. It's really weird. Let me go back and try again. Share screen. I'm starting over. Sharing my screen now? Yes? Okay, I don't know what happened there. I'm sorry. Just stop me again. Okay, so um, funding sources. So there's the discretionary funding sources with, which we get to vote on and allocate. Then there is centrally funded positions, which are funded through, um, the CPS central office. And you can see those there. And then we have our friends of Agassi, friends of Bulldogs, um, organization that donates fundraised dollars to the school. And we're fortunate to have Cubs charities again donating to the school this school year. So when you click on this link up at the top, it, it will bring you to this page here. And this describes the different funding sources and how much we're getting for the 2022 school year as well as the change in allocation from what we got for this year to next year. So you'll see, um, overall, we had an increase in funding specifically in student-based budgeting as well as Title II A, which we did not get last year that we're getting this year. And we saw a dip in, uh, supplemental aid by about $12,000. Um, and that is just due to, uh, poverty levels and different ways that the state aid is calculated, supplemental aid, shouldn't call it stated anymore. So see, it stops sharing every time I go back. All right. So that is a little bit about the actual funding sources. What I will show you now is a breakdown of what the budget plan looks like. So some highlights that I'm going to go through before I show the main screen. Um, from our discretionary funding, we are for the first time being given a halftime case manager. As you know, that was part of the negotiations between CPS and CTU that at a certain point when you had, um, enough or a certain number of diverse learners, you would receive a halftime case manager or a full-time. We are receiving a halftime case manager and I will be proposing tonight that with our discretionary dollars, we pay the other half to make it a full-time position. Uh, we also, I'm proposing funding extended day planning for staff. This is really specific to looking at our IB units, making sure we are building in and rewriting, um, with the social justice standards as well as reviewing and making sure the social emotional standards are embedded. Um, and it's also part of IB that every year we're looking at those and adapting and revising. Funding substitutes, um, hopefully we will be back in a time where we can go in each other's classrooms and observe or go to other schools and observe. If not, we always need substitute money for, as we know, within the teacher contract. Um, with CTU, there are seven days funded, uh, within that contract and then, but staff can take up to 10 benefit days. And so we always add substitute money in case we are over that average. And then additionally, like we had planned for this year that we reallocated, we are putting back in J at school for lunch and recess. The hope being that we're allowed to have, you know, people in our building and, and helping us out again. And then to highlight just changes in centrally funded positions, I, I spoke about the halftime case manager. As you know, last year we lost our halftime bilingual and so we paid for it ourselves. This year we're getting the halftime bilingual back, um, that is now being centrally funded again. We will lose one paraprofessional as currently indicated. Uh, for anyone who's been around and who knows our school population in particular, or has been to an LSC meeting, I feel like every year I say we're losing a paraprofessional and then almost every year we end up getting one back. Um, and so, you know, while this is a loss, I do always caution for us and just our school community and our population. There are many times we get students who come in through the lottery, um, and that's the citywide lottery that we don't know. We still don't know the lottery results even yet this year who require additional diverse learner support, specifically paraprofessionals. And so while this is a loss currently, there is always the opportunity that it, um, would be regained with new students and an appeal process. And then our friends of Bulldogs, um, I am proposing the $10,000 that I believe for the last three years, they have graciously donated for staff professional development. That would include trainings on, um, cultural responsive teaching, social justice standards. Um, you know, last year we did teaching tolerance and things, things of that nature. It also helps to fund um, outside professional development. If teachers want to go to, you know, literacy professional development or math professional development, those funds make that possible. And then last but not least, we have the Cubs charity fund. That's $25,000 this year. They specifically this year, um, stated that they would donate those funds even if, you know, because they know usually it's a match. So if you raise 25, they give you 25. They're giving that money this year, knowing that schools are in a, a very difficult position and that many schools were not able to raise additional funds this year. And the caveat being I had to, um, approve with them what we would be using that on and it had to be student-directed. So they did approve the use of those funds. Obviously, LSC has to vote, but they did approve that I could put forward the proposal for the online learning subscriptions and learning tools for students. So I'm going to share the full plan now and what it looks like. Um, so you'll see at the top, the centrally funded positions. Those positions in green were positions that we did not receive last year that we're receiving this year. So you'll see, um, the changes there are only positive, the halftime EL and the halftime case manager, in which I'm proposing we fund the other half. And then down under SBB and general staffing, those are all of our general ed classroom teachers and our specialty teachers. And then centrally funded diverse learning staff, you'll see there in red, the one paraprofessional, but we will remain with nine, um, diverse learner teachers. And then you'll see the amounts that I am, um, proposing, we allocate towards substitutes and extended day, a copier contract and the J at school recess support. So I'm going to go back now and I'll probably have to reshare my screen. So here we go. There we have it. So that was very fast. I understand, um, LSC has had at least three days to look at it. So for them, it wasn't as fast. I will share the document as well on, um, the website and it will be sent via Aspen and publicized, um, once LSC has had their discussion tonight and hopefully approved all of the documents and budget plan. Um, but at this time, open it up for conversations and questions and we do need to approve both separately. So we want to focus on CIWP first and then move to budget, um, or we can intertwine, but we do need to vote separately.
Okay, thank you, Mira, for, um, pulling this together. So in such a friendly format, appreciate it with all the information and the links. Um, that was very helpful. Um, rather than, um, let's just, just, just go into discussion and questions about the items in general rather than having a motion and discussion, discussing a motion. Um, but let's, uh, start with the CIWP. Um, does anyone have any questions or anything there?
I'll start. Um, thank you, Mira, for the presentation. I echo Tina's sentiments shared. Um, incredible work. Um, I echo to the, the team that was put forward. Um, I have a couple of clarifying questions. Sorry, these braces. And just a, a couple, um, other, you know, more kind of, um, thought, thought, thought questions. Um, for the CID, CIWP in particular, I know I asked in the last LSC meeting, even if the last one, maybe the one prior to that about the data. You know, what, what that data analysis process looked like, um, recognizing where Agassi is so strong at and where those, um, opportunities for growth are. Um, and, um, just kind of acknowledging what as a parent I've seen and when I've heard other parents talk about, just, um, around, um, trend data. I know we had a presentation from our, our, uh, district office about, you know, what that trend data has looked like for our school over time. We know math has been one of those key areas and also kind of seeing trend data around gaps, uh, within our subgroup populations in math. Um, and I do see, um, how the CIWP is speaking to those areas. So just want to just acknowledge and say thank you for, you know, continuing the work around, um, um, you know, addressing kind of where we are overall as a school in our math, um, proficiency and growth. Um, and then really looking to see how we can provide additional support for our subgroup populations. Um, I did see that on the, um, on the tab for, believable, I think it was for MTSS. Um, we, we, there was reference to using a standards-based math curriculum, which is awesome. And then um, you, having math tools for differentiation, which I think really speaks to where we're, where we're need to go there. Uh, but I didn't see the date, um, on the timeline for, um, the math tools for differentiation under the MTSS tab. So just, you know, curious about that. Um, and, um, and, and, and just also kind of, I, you know, one of the things I, I, I know I feel strongly about is um, just that when we think about, uh, family engagement at Agassi's, we have, once again, that's one of our strong suits with regards to, um, how families are able to champion and rally and advocate for our school and our school needs, um, on a number of levels. And we really do come together. Um, looking at trend data again and looking at the My Choice, My Voice survey, we know that parents can fill it out. We know that teachers and students can fill it out. Trend data is once again showing us that there's variance between how teachers perceive family engagement and how parents perceive family engagement. On one spectrum, teachers and students perceive it as very strong. And then parents were kind of trending towards neutral and weak. So really looking to see how when we think about, um, that family engagement piece, recognizing, yes, we do have many parents who are, are involved at many levels. Um, but also challenging us is, uh, there's a community to think about ways in which we can, um, kind of come to the middle around our engagement efforts specifically as it relates to how we're partnering with families, um, around, you know, uh, addressing, you know, learning barriers. And I know that when there's, you know, discipline issues or those issues around learning challenges in the classroom, how we can, um, unilaterally address those issues. Um, um, I, I saw a reference to a parent contract, um, you know, very curious to kind of know more about that, but, um, uh, really, you know, how can we make sure that those, those opportunities where there's a learning barrier, it's an ongoing process and the parent is very much.
Sarah, I think you hit your mute button.
You hit mute by accident.
Sorry. Also looking at ways in which we, um, involve families in decision-making as it relates to, um, um, you know, how we're creating and implementing our CIWP. So how we continually to engage our families, not only in the development of the CIWP, but supporting um, families in that process. And as, and LSC, how can we as a board really contribute to that, you know, that process more specifically? I noted in the CIWP, there was reference to creating a handbook for, um, restorative practices. Um, and the, the folks responsible for that handbook was administrators and some other reference, but could families be a part of that process and creating that handbook? Um, so just an, an example of how to continue, um, continue that journey. And then, um, last, last, last reference, last note. Um, was just going back to the achievement, uh, gap issue. It was, it tends to, once again, ways in which we can, um, really engage families in that journey. Um, so we, there's a mention of progress monitoring, uh, which is great. Can families, how can we involve families in the progress monitoring piece in more transparent ways? Um, and then also having transparent ways when we think about our grading practices for our students, um, love the references to standards-based grading. Um, um, I know that we're working towards getting rubrics. So students are more so aware about where they know and how they're thinking about their learning and where they're going in that way. But, um, just, you know, getting back to, um, thinking about ways to, um, strengthen our work around family engagement as being, uh, very strategic and, and, and making sure that it's linked to learning and healthy development outcomes. In addition to the great work that we're doing as, as a school community overall.
Well, I, I appreciate everything you had to say, Sarah. I have no idea that I'm going to remember everything or address everything. Uh, so certainly feel free to email everything too. But I think a big piece of that was parent engagement, which we've all, um, I think spent a lot of time talking about and not just about how do we engage around different pieces of, you know, a school community and the work that goes into building a strong school community for students and families. But also how do we do that piece equitably and involve different families, not just always kind of that core group of families. So I think there's a lot there, um, and a lot of opportunity to address a lot of what you're specifically asking about, but also by expanding who we're looking to, to help fill those, um, holes and get that feedback also. Um, so I think you brought up a lot of really, really valid points. Um, and things that we've talked a lot about, just even in the equity conversation itself. So, but um, if you don't mind emailing me kind of that feedback, that would be helpful because I know I'm not going to remember every piece of that.
You know, I, having, having been on the CIWP committee, I, I want to add that there was a really conscious effort to hear and, and, and enact feedback about having parents involved in different processes along the way. Um, that is something that I definitely noticed, um, as, as we met each time and went through feedback there. Pieces where initially it was, uh, something that only teachers or admin were talking about. There was the addition of bringing the parent in and even involving the student as well. And some of those conversations around monitoring cycles around, um, keeping up with their grades and, and things like that. So, um, I will definitely commend, uh, Mira and the rest of the committee on bringing that piece in because it is an important, uh, piece. I agree. Um, you know, one, a, a couple of general, just, um, action items I would, I would like to have just kind of moving forward when it comes to the CIWP. I think it would be helpful to have, um, throughout several actions, there are different teams that are established or different lead positions that are established. Um, if we could have a list of those team members and, and those leads, so we know who those are in the school, that would be helpful. Um, the, the second thing I'd like to request is, um, I, you know, I know, like you said, we're in the last year of, of this one and there's so much great stuff in this. I know it will carry over, but there are some things that are completed, so to speak. And so I would like to have kind of, um, I, I, I know we're, we're working on it. There was kind of like an evidence column. And so I, I would like to have at some point, I don't know if it's, um, you know, a, a meeting early next fall, you know, early when school starts again. Uh, with, with June, it's probably too late. So maybe, you know, meeting when school starts again, just going back and looking at those items that we're saying are complete and having a debrief, you know, what, what was done, what was learned, you know, what's next kind of, um, meeting, kind of informative meeting. Um, and then, uh, getting back to the, the evidence piece of things, just want to know. Um, I know we're going to have the CIWP as a, as a standing agenda item. At least I know it is currently and I would expect that that would continue. Um, I would like to revisit that piece more regularly, um, to definitely inform and engage our families about. Again, these are the actions we said we're going to do. This is where we are, what we've done, and this is the outcome. This is what's working. These are the next steps. And so, um, I would like to see that, I think that speaks to Sarah's point as far as LSC engagement in this process as well. Um, keeping up with the actions that are taking place with the CIWP.
And, um, Tina, I think in the committee, and someone can jump in and correct me, but I think some of the discussion around building it out in terms of the timeline and how we laid it out, you know, by season sort of, was that the, so like, let's say it's summer. Well, we don't really meet in summer, but The, so like, let's say it's summer. Well, we don't really meet in summer, but bad example. Let's say it's fall. That in fall, that timeline is kind of updated and reported out on the action items for fall and where we are. I think that's a little bit what we talked about to give some focus. Um, but certainly as a standing agenda item. You know, in the past, we've decided at this meeting what we would talk about at the next meeting in terms of CIWP. So. You know, um, those are just a few different ways that we've talked about doing it, but. I think gets at what you're saying, Tina.
Yeah, I think the timeline, the way you built it out with the timeline is, is helpful and facilitating that discussion for sure. Um, just had some, just looking at the um, some of the act- or yeah, some of the actions for the different strategies. For strategy number one, um, now I, I numbered them just for my own sake, so I could get to them quickly. Uh, but there's the actions around uh, um. Well, one action is uh, conducting an analysis of current restorative practice and impact to determine if the practices are utilized equitably. And or if they impact subgroups differently. So that's one action. And then there's another action about um, creating. A restorative practices handbook. And um, I just want to, um. I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that there's a delineation in the use of practices there, because of course, when you're looking at. Uh, impact of past practices, you're, you're not talking about restorative practice as a policy. But how, how it plays out. So just wanna confirm that those are looking at things uh, differently.
Yeah, so I think there's two pieces. I think it's what are the practices that we're using? Like what are the strategies or interventions or, you know, restorative? Practice. And then there's the, what is the outcome of that practice, which is a separate set of data as well. Um, so I think there's two layers there.
Okay, okay. And I, I notice there's no responsible party for, for the one as far as looking at how. Those practices have been rolled out and potential impacting.
That's my fault, much like Sarah's saying, I missed a timeline date. So that's just me. I, I don't know what it is, but. Um, I mean, the responsible team, honestly, so for each strategy, we are creating. A school-based, like a team, that's kind of gonna be the ones charged with, you know, monitoring those cycles and those action items. So. That would be the team's responsibility for that strategy.
Okay, okay. And, and that's kind of the approach of every strategy you're saying?
Yeah, every strategy has an action item that um, specifically says establish a team. And so much like you said, who is the team, who's the lead, who are the members? So every strategy, there's automatically four teams then.
Okay, okay, great.
And the hope is that this spring, we identify who wants to work within each strategy. So we'd have those teams going into summer.
Okay, okay. Um, another action under uh, strategy one talks about um. It is further develop counseling program, uh, develop schedules, facilitate. Climate and culture meetings, support students with zones of regulation to strengthen students' academic, social, emotional, and career goals. Just wondering um, for information, information sake, the climate and culture meetings, what, what are those?
Um, so the counselor really needs those now with a group of staff members who just regularly are checking in. They conduct surveys. Um, checking in on how is the student climate and culture, where, where do our students have needs right now? Um, and the idea, I think we, you know, we talked about it in the CIWP meeting, the zones of regulation. Um, is really a strata- a system or way of thinking that's used to help cue students if you're feeling red, which means angry. What are some strategies you can use to bring yourself down? But the idea behind doing that school-wide is that so we're all using common language. And by the time a kindergartner gets to fifth grade. They're aware of those strategies. They've been practicing them so that we can fine tune them as we grow and, and go through the school, but that we're all. Teaching the same strategies. And currently, our counselor does use that and our social worker does, um, you know, as well. But to embed that into the classroom and just as part of our restorative practice is what we're aiming for.
Okay, okay.
Add one more into the classroom and beyond, even for our families. So how can we have our families start using some of that language at home too? I know MTSS folk, you know, that thinks about ways we can extend that language there as well.
Yeah, I envision that being kind of a handbook item too, is sharing what those practices are within that handbook and explaining them and how they're used. Absolutely.
Is there a possibility to attach a family or a, or somebody, a community member to these teams? In some kind of meaningful way or create some sort of a committee that is parent-led and more a part of. So they're kind of, I mean, I get a handbook, but I feel like, I feel like a handbook isn't enough. I feel like. And a participation.
For sure. I, I think there's opportunity in some areas. I don't think in all. And he is specifically because in some of those. Um, teams, you're looking at very specific student data and that would be um, a confidentiality issue. So I do think that there's a direct way to tie parents in on many of them, but not all. Um, I agree with you, like a parent handbook you read and then what? But to, to have more of a partnership around that piece, I definitely see. A natural tie. It makes a lot of sense. It takes a village. Um, but then on other, you know, MTSS where we're looking at. Um, specific student data every five weeks, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be the right fit there, if that makes sense.
Can I, okay, you're gone.
Oh, I was just gonna say, also with just some of the social emotional learning, like getting parents using the same words at home as their teachers are using at school. I think we were, uh, a couple of years ago, we had those um, kind of parent seminars or like. Parent, you know, that we brought people in, talking about this, these things. If we could get the same trainers that are teaching the. Um, the teachers about how they're supposed to be having kids express their emotions and learn on those strategies. If we could have the same kind of thing in, you know, and have a couple of them. So it's not just like if you can't make it to. Um, a morning meeting, like, it seems like it would be a pretty easy thing to have a couple of different ones at different times to try to capture as many parents as possible. Because the reinforcement part is really important. When kids have very different expectations at home and at school, it creates a lot more problems. And so the more we can streamline efforts, the better.
Thanks, Kate. Absolutely. I think Lori is her hand raised.
I was being so patient. There we go. And so, yeah, I love every, that's when I, I have a whole bunch of post-its. I'll let Tina finish, but I, this is on this topic. Uh, we do have in CPS, we have whole departments that are already funded. So if we wanted to have social emotional learning, if we wanted to have parent workshops, if we wanted to have restorative practices. Coaches that do the training with the teachers, they do the training with students, they do the training with parents, all of those things are already created. They're free. And all we have to do as a school is request the services. They already have, I think I've actually CC'd the LSC at least. I've sent you some of the brochures and the workbooks that they've already created. But I think that there is a structure beautifully in place that. Use in addition to um, outside equity consultants. But I know some of the teachers have already gone through that training of the restorative practices. Uh, so I just wanted to throw that out when we're talking about that as a wish list item. I feel like that is something that could easily be implemented. Without too much um, heavy lifting to make it happen.
I thi- I think, thank you, Lori. Um, and I, I know you um. Are leading one particular committee, but I think this is a, a real good opportunity for the um. Parent Engagement and Communication Committee to, to take that, to take something like this on. Um, and, and not have it on Mara's plate, you know, to organize, but to support the CIWP work through um. Using some of those resources. So we'll probably be tapping you, Lori, to get that information, but I think it's a good opportunity.
I, I do have a lot of experience with that and I, and I do that through outside sources and through um, things that I know. But along those lines, when we're talking about, I, I, I know my eyes are moving because I'm looking at you all on the screen. And so the variety of eyes that we have on there, and I think a lot of people have already mentioned it today and we hear that in feedback. How do we open up this lens? Because what I'm seeing, when I do see the lists of who's involved, I see so much crossover. So the teachers. Nicholas Hall, who's on the LSC, is also on the CIWP and he's also doing all of this and the same people. So um, I love the people who are doing that because A, you're taking on extra work. So rock on. And I love that you have that flow. Through all of those things. But I think that we're missing all of this other outside experience and these other outside ideas of people. When we only have Patty's on this and she's in charge of all of our fundraising, you know, Molly does this and she does that. Like. I think we need to start to open up our lens of experience and knowledge. And along those lines too, when we're talking about climate, cul- climate and culture, also bringing in the students. Because students have a whole different perspective of what's really happening in school than what the staff might know. And what one teacher might see, the other teacher may not notice at all. So really starting to think about. Bringing on those student voices. And I think they made it clear with their survey this year. And that not just the older kids, that the younger kids do have a lot to contribute to that. Those are those two post-its. Um, could I, should I just ask a few more questions? So I'm going here. All right. And so I talked about Office of Social Emotional Learning. Who, um, who are the equity consultants that are listed? Who, and I know we used to have a restorative justice, like coach, who is the restorative practice coordinator and who is on that team?
So Carol, I am Laja, um, has been on, you know, you've interacted with her just through the renaming process. Uh, she interacted with staff last week and this week as part of our professional development. So she is the consultant referenced. Um, you know, if I'm talking about like Dr. Sweeney or Liam Bird, I, I usually say Office of Equity. Those are our contacts there. Um, our restorative justice, our restorative practice coordinator is actually not funded for next year. So that is language that would need to be um. Were removed. I thought I had reviewed that actually, but I, I guess maybe I missed it. The team themselves though would be the team working in that actual. Area. So um, who, whoever's kind of signs up for that strategy will help to create who that team would look like. Or what that team would look like, I'm sorry.
Uh, that's surprise, I mean, it's surprising to me with all the work that has to be done, that we don't have that position and I understand funding. So there, will there be a point person who is going to be taking on that role as a volunteer position? Or is it something that later on we might wanna try to get funded? What will that look like?
Um, yes, there will certainly be a point person. I can't give you a name of a person today. But there will most certainly be a point person and a team that will be charged with kind of, you know, the, the monitoring and the implementation and updating. But I just, I couldn't, you know, that's an opportunity that staff's gonna have um, here in spring to sign up for and then further to develop. Who that person will be as the actual like main point person.
Um, so I asked that, I, I wanted to throw out how happy I am and that we have a full-time case manager. And I think that that is something that we needed for a long time. And I wanna also ask the question, as speaking of a parent, a lot of people come to me. Um, from outside the school. So when Mara's talking about the lottery kids coming in that may need um, IEPs and paraprofessional support. I'll just be honest, people reach out to me all the time from across the city because they hear great things about our school. So let's say, because I know that there's, I, I bet I can see a bunch of your names on here. They're wondering, what is the timeline? So if we accept in September, a whole bunch of kids that have IEPs and need paraprofessional support. What would be the appeal timeline to get those positions filled?
Oh, Lori, you always have such great questions. Results um, for the lottery go out May twenty eighth. So there will be, and as you guys know, there's a first round, there's a second round and it's rolling. But the minute that we identify, and again, some of this is parents who enroll, we are not allowed to ask them, like, does your child require? Diverse learner supports. But if they tell us that information, once they're enrolled, we can use their IEP or their document. Which identifies their needs to create um, an appeal for the Office of Diverse Learners and Supports. That is kind of an ongoing process and I don't know that, um, and, and I certainly don't mind following up. I just don't know if there's a specific timeline from that department as to when you submit and when you get it back. Um.
So you're saying, when you get it, because when I applied for the lottery to get into this school, because I'm a lottery family. They asked me point blank, does your child, on the processes, does your child have an IEP? So I'm wondering, do we fill that out and are you not getting that information? Because I had to fill it out for all three kids. I see Marilyn, she's like, I see these forms, I know. Uh, I see your face. So what is that? Because I know I have to do it when I applied to get in here three years ago. Did it change or is that one of those little things that they don't bother to tell you, but they ask?
No, you, you, it may be on the form, you are not required. So like, not everyone is as forthcoming, I guess. And so if someone does accept and, you know, num- either we don't know or, you know. They don't volunteer the information until fully enrolled and we see them in the computer system. We wouldn't have access to that information.
That is, that is hard on you. Um, so.
So that's why it's kind of a rolling process. So, you know, there may be someone who enrolls in June. But unless we know very upfront what their needs are and they in fact have an IEP with need indicated. If we don't find that out until the first day of school or, you know, until they complete all the information, then it, it is a little bit of um. It, it's just ongoing. It, it's not a perfect system in that regard.
I just wanna state for the record, that's unfair to the school and I'm sorry that you all have to do that extra work. I also just wanna state for the record, um, what you said about, uh, when we were talking about fundraising, I wanted to say how. Amazing it is that we have our friends of Bulldogs and how much work they do. And I've seen, I went on, I went, Tina and I went to their meetings last time to be supportive. And seeing it's a small group doing a lot of work. But I wanna say for the record, let's point out that how awesome it is that we have that. And how depressing that not all schools are able to do that, especially when I just learned that the Chicago Cubs who have so much money. Are usually making it that you have to raise a match. So that means the wealthiest schools are going to get twenty-five thousand dollars to do even more with their money. And the schools that don't have a friends of, don't have a way to facilitate that much money, don't have that opportunity. So I just wanted to throw that out there. So I'm grateful that we're getting it. I love that we can do all the cool stuff with it, but it's really depressing that it's not an option for everybody. And I think I made it through my post-it notes.
Right, Mara, so the, the items um, like uh, under strategy four, there were like the last. Several of the last items don't have a responsible. So will that information be filled in before you post it?
Don't have a, say it again, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Don't have a responsible party.
Oh, um, yeah, you know what? I think I focused so much on the timeline for tonight. Those will be updated for sure.
Okay.
I thought that, you know what, I may have done it in the other document and not even put it in this one. I will double check that for sure though, yes.
Okay, great.
Can I ask a follow-up question to one of the questions that Lori raised about the restorative practice coordinator? Just, you know, what actually is, you know, that position's, you know, not funded, but um, impact, like um, you know, is that. What is the impact of that position not being available? And then is it realistic to say that we'll be able to find other ways to um. Supplement that work? Um, I just curious about to know how, how not having that position impacts our overall work moving forward.
Um, I mean, you know, I can't sit here and say it's not gonna have any impact. I think we're going to be looking for other ways to. Cover the responsibilities and, you know, the restorative practice coordinator was only here half, uh, not even halftime. It was like three hours a day. Um, and it typically overlapped during recess because um, that's a lot of where we saw kind of. Issues taking place and, and it's needing to talk things out or um, need some, needing an adult to kind of help them process through different pieces. The hope is that with Jay at school back, um, there will be other people who are now doing actual lunch and recess duties that would be freed up. Who could potentially take on some of the, that responsibility.
I have a specific question about that. Jay at school? So we pay for them, right? How are they trained and held accountable for IEPs, kids who need additional support? Uh, how are they then? And so we're saying that we think that Jay at school is going to start to take some of that place. Of, okay, well, they're, they're gonna be there, they're gonna see all these things. How are they trained and how are they held accountable? For that kind of work, when I bet that's not in their job description?
Um, so, right. So let me clarify one thing. They're not, they're not responsible to handle it. It'll, them doing the recess will free us up to do some of the other. Intervening. But they do receive, when we do our, like, in this example, zones of regulation at the beginning of the school year. They typically, their staff has joined our staff in that section of our professional development, so that we're on the same page. Um, we do responsive classroom where we model, like, here's how you walk to recess. Uh, the teacher usually models that for their staff. Um, for the first couple of days. So we do a lot of overlapping and have them in our professional development as well. Now, listen. No, they are not certified teachers and, you know, we know that there has been concerns in the past. Um, what I will say is that they're very good at reporting them to us for additional support. And as well as their supervisors, if needed, are very responsible, are recep- receptive to us if we need to share feedback with them. Um, I, I, you know, in our early years with them, I, I could see that being a little bit more of an issue in the last couple of years. In the last couple of years, while there still have remained some issues. Um, we have seen an improvement in terms of the follow-up and kind of the back and forth dialogue and support. So, um, you know, we, we, we try and train them as we train our staff and include them as part of the staff for that reason.
Do you know if they, um, as an organization are planning any kind of, uh, equity training for their people who are going into schools? Um, just my own personal experience, I, I know I've seen differences in the way things have been handled between different groups of kids.
That I don't know, that I would honestly have to ask Tina. I don't know that offhand. I don't mind asking, I just can't give you an answer.
Okay. That'd be great.
I would love to see this as an action item, a, a conversation. I know because a lot of parents have reached out about problems with Jay at school. And, and I personally have had problems. So I would love to see that as something we talk about further. What kind of training, how are they held accountable, what ways can we implement them more? Um, and support them as well, because they're left to deal with, we all know what it's like out there on recess, if you've ever seen it. Um, but that would be real, and even in the classroom, they're in the hallways, they see a lot. So I would love to see this as a further follow-up as ways that we can improve that, so we pay for.
I echo that as well. I think any training that we could be doing to help them. Get on board with the teachers. I just feel like I've been in the school long enough. Seeing the transition to when teachers were on the playgrounds versus when Jay at school was at the playgrounds. And just, um, kind of hearing things like, oh, we're just here to make sure you don't get hurt. We don't deal with any problems between you. When, and then hearing from teachers that it escalates and then turns into problems in the classroom as well. I feel like anything that we can do to kind of improve communication, improve problem solving. Improve all of that interaction stuff that happens on the playground would help in the classroom as well. So if, I know they're not our employees and they're contracted. But I feel like spending some money on training them would probably pay back dividends in the classroom. And in other places.
Yeah, and I, I certainly don't mean to, um, cut the conversation or say Jay at school is not an important topic. I think for the purposes of moving through the document of the CIWP and the budget, we might, you know. That certainly is a need and I understand why it's coming up, but I think the specifics of how we're gonna handle that. We may, may just want to have a follow-up kind of conversation or action item about that.
Can we ask questions about the budget now? Are we, have we moved on?
Sure.
Yeah. Um, so Mira, I just have a question. I've just, in hearing a lot of other, um. Like, other principals and other, you know, LSCs talking about the budgets, kind of looking at this budget as a little bit of a gift. Because there are a lot of movement out of schools, there are a lot of people moving to the suburbs during the pandemic, there were people going to, um, private schools. And so, um, kind of being funded at where we were pre-pandemic to where. And even if our ten-day, um, census isn't where it's supposed to be next year, we'll still be able to have a solid budget. So we know what we're working with. It makes great sense. I'm very happy about it. But I'm just wondering how far off this budget is. From kids we actually have either in hybrid or remote learning right now. In terms of like, how big of a jolt will it be going? That we either need to increase our enrollment a significant amount going to that next fiscal year. Or we're gonna be facing pretty significant decreases in funding.
Yeah, um, no, it's a good question, Kate. Uh, and I don't know if, I mean, we certainly have not heard how that will impact beyond this year. But it's certainly a good question and I know it's something being discussed. Um, we had a twenty-eight student differential between, um, last year and this year. Um, many of those students, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I, I did talk about this at an earlier LSC meeting. Many of them were students who moved out of state or to the suburbs, like you said. Um, or to private schools, but some of them also indicated, and again, I don't know if they follow through. But many of them indicated that they went private with the intention of coming back when CPS was back five days a week. Um, now, we can't bank on that obviously, but that, those were some of the conversations that I had with, with a fair amount of those families. So we did have a twenty-eight, um, student differential though, when, when you're looking at hard numbers in enrollment.
Uh, Mira, that's for, within this year.
Um, that is, um, that is from last year to this year.
So to piggyback off, um, your comment, Kate, so this budget is based on how the kids we had. Fall twenty nineteen, right?
Yeah, they did not change. So what, so what they did was called an adjustment. So they adjusted our enrollment for the twenty-eight that we would have been down, they adjusted it and left it equal.
Okay, um, and with the lottery getting new kids in for this next year. Um, if, you know, fingers crossed, we have an increase in the fall. Do we then get extra money? Or is it kind of like, no, because we gave you a, a, a deal this year, like, that's it, right?
I don't believe that, I don't believe that we'd get extra money. There may be a threshold at which you could say something, but I don't know. And for us, because there, there really was a twenty-eight student difference, I don't know that we'd be in a position to do that.
Um. You can always dream. Um, as far as I'm, um, familiar with Title One money, Title Two A is that. So that we got this year, is that something we've gotten in the past and why did we get it this year, if you can talk to that?
Um, so Title Two is federal dollars. We've had Title Two before. And Title Two is funding that you can only use on staff professional development. Title Two A, you can actually use on staff themselves. So if you noticed in the positions, we have a sta- a teacher staffed out of those funds. Whereas in the past, we got regular Title Two and you could only use that on professional development, not on human beings.
And they gave it to us this year because, is there a change in our population? Does it have to do with, um, demographics or?
Demographics, poverty and, um, index. I'm just looking through my notes if there's like a quick thing, otherwise I can follow up with that. There, there's a way it's calculated, um. I don't want to tell you incorrectly, so I'm seeing if I can find it quickly. Or I can, I, I can certainly put that as an action item.
Yeah, I can look it up too, I just, you know, quickly, yeah, no worries, thank you.
So I just follow up with next question, um, Title Two, um, Part A is funding, is funding that we have not received before. We're funding the teaching position for that. How stable is that funding pocket? Will we, do you think we'll see it next year? And then what type of adjustments will we, you know, do you foresee making? If, you know, if that's not the case, if that funding is not available?
Yeah, um, to be honest, I don't know if we'll have it next year, but I kind of liken it to if we don't get the funding for those twenty-eight kids. And they don't all come back, it's kind of like, you know. It, it's gonna offset whether it comes out of Title Two A or it comes out of SBB. It's all discretionary funding that we vote on, so regardless of the source per se, it's money that we use to fund staff. So it, you know, it could all look very different depending on how we right-size for the enrollment change moving forward. I, and I just don't have, I don't have that answer.
I just want to clarify, because I, this sounds like different than what I'm used to. So student-based budgeting, before it was, however many kids were there on like the tenth day and the twentieth day, that's where we got money. But because they gave it to us earlier, you're saying that if we ended up getting plus twenty-eight, plus some more. We would not get any additional funds because they have already just said, screw it, we're calculating it, here's your budget.
No, I'm not saying that for sure, but what I'm saying is usually there's a threshold where you have to get at least ten additional kids. Before you get additional money or there's some threshold and I don't know what that would look like now. Since so many schools did get money front-loaded, knowing that we had seen an enrollment decline. And I just don't know how that's going to be handled, um, specifically.
That, thank you. And then also just along those lines and maybe just again, putting this as an additional, um, item for later on, like a thing to look at. We did lose twenty-eight kids and a lot of things were different and the world is different. Is there anything that we are doing as a school to start to encourage people? Like, people put twenty schools down on the lottery, they're gonna get accepted to like six. How are we selling ourselves? How, are we putting it out there in the neighborhood? In Alderman Tunnies thing, are we putting it out there that we are this amazing school, we have a new name, we're IB all around? How are we selling ourselves to try to get more kids from the lottery, more neighborhood kids to choose us? Um, is that something that we're doing to look to boost our numbers?
Yeah, um, I think those are really good questions Lori. And a big part of why we wanted kind of that agents of change slogan to follow us through the renaming was. Specifically for that reason, because we want people to know there's this change happening. Um, and a lot of that is because of enrollment and branding and people being able to find us and know who we are. Um, so, so there's definitely that, um, you know, as, as things start to, you know, like, they've applied already or not for next year. Doesn't mean we don't, you know, continue and we stop. But what will happen is as soon as we get the list of those that applied, even if they didn't get a spot. We, we generate an email to them and we follow up with them personally. So there's some things we do once the lottery does come out that will help. So even if you're undecided, you have a personal contact from us.
That's really smart, thank you. And I encourage all the parents on here when your friends start messaging you, hey, I got in, do I want to go to this school? Say yes.
I would hope.
Um, so I'm gonna say something a little opposite of what Lori just said, not about how great our school is. That, that's not what I was gonna say. Well, what I wanted to talk about was. Just since the funding is so different this year, normally we are doing everything we can to get every kid we can in the door. So that we get that funding and we meet our goals and we can keep all our staff. The equation's gonna be different this year. Um, and being a school that takes so many kids off the lottery, in some ways we can decide where our classroom sizes are. And I just feel like next year is gonna be such a challenging year for teachers, bringing full classrooms of kids back in. A lot of kids, I'm seeing a ton of screen addiction in my office. Um, just like, it's real and it's gonna be problematic and it's going to be, there's gonna be a lot of issues that come up. That I'm sure you guys are all anticipating. And I'm just wondering how this budget and how we're going to be funded next year. Changes the calculation about maybe what our max class sizes are. Like, for sixth grade, for example, I know when Julia was in sixth grade, there were like thirty-some kids in each room. Given the kids that are, that have left last year or like moving up, that would be like ten new kids in each room next year if we went to thirty in sixth grade. And that just sounds like an undoable situation if I were Mr. Collins and Mr. Yang. So, uh, uh, um, so anyway, I just was wondering how this budget changes what our maxes are.
Mr. Collins and Mr. Yang could do anything, I just wanted to say.
Um, that's a good question, Kate. Um, that's something Ms. Caro and I worked through when we get kind of those lottery results. And it really helps us to drive how we handle the actual waiting list as well. Um, so those are kind of, you know, typically, you're right, in a, in a typical year, we actually do offer all those seats. Because we know not everyone's going to accept them either. So there's, there's different variables at different grade levels that we look at. Also why it was so important when we did the are you returning survey, uh, to get a feel for which families are really gonna stay and which are gonna go. I can say, um, very positively, we only had two families, um, indicate that they were leaving. Um, for next school year, so that's a good indicator, at least for the current moment in time. Um, and so those, there's like various pieces that we take into account. But certainly understanding your point about coming back next year and, you know, unfinished learning and getting back into the building. And all of that will be important.
I have another budget question. So you brought up agents of change. Where is that, like, where is the cost of changing everything in the budget? So the marquee, the letterhead, business cards, all of it, where is that money coming from? Or is that a CPS pays for that kind of thing?
No, I worked out with our elected officials. So Alderman Tom Tunnie and Senator Sarah Feigenholtz are covering the, um, the artwork. The letterheads, the outdoor banners, the kiosk. So that will, we will not have to take any funding away from our students or school for that. That was really important to me in this entire process. Um, what we do not know yet, it will not be our cost, but we don't have covered how it gets etched out of the stone on the building. That's a CPS thing, but everything else is being covered, um, very graciously by our elected officials.
That's excellent.
Yeah. We're very lucky.
I had a quick question, when, just reading, um, all the hard work that's got into this. And glad that it's a moving document, but I'm really feeling for the teachers right now, there's, on the timeline. There's so much professional development and coming into the spring and the summer. It's like, I, my heart like skipped a beat for you guys. I'm like, holy cow, my pants are on fire just looking at this. How is that gonna come about and is ten thousand dollars enough for professional development across the board? I just.
I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad that stuck out to you Cindy, thank you.
Oh my gosh, yeah.
It is a lot, it is a lot. And I think as we were crafting it, our thought process was, there's no harm in putting it there, it can be moved. You know, we do need to be realistic as well and there will be some pieces we're not gonna be able to bite off. If we want to do this in a really well-thought-out and thorough manner. Um, some of the action items for spring, and I was looking at it today too, because I was like, oh my gosh. Um, some of them are, you know, I don't want to say quick and easy, but like identifying a team. That's not gonna take a ton of time, so those are, there are some things that will be, um, less time sent to, less time-consuming. Um, there is a fair amount of professional development, some we can do in grade level meetings that'll take time. Some teachers have already said, I'd rather do some of the front-loading in the summer and use the extended day pay to help us plan in summer. So there's different ways to come at it, um, but it, it may not all get done. And I just go into it with the understanding that that's okay. Um, because I, I really do firmly believe that to do it right, we have to take our time to do it. And, and if we're just gonna rush through it, it's not meaningful at all. It's not gonna create the change that we really want.
Okay, and then kind of on that note, when, um, the whole portion I'd love about student voice, I think it's just so important. For them, for their ownership, to have the onus of their education. But also there's such a great connection to their family and their family values and having that, you know, communication back and forth. How many dollars are sort of put towards the student directly in terms of developing them? And get, getting them workshopped and getting them their sort of student development? That's not just earmarked for teachers to pass along, but for students to actually have that participation. In some really great, you know, building, character building activities outside of school or in school.
I have to give that some thought Cindy, to think through how to best address that. I think I understand, um. But I think I need to give that a little more thought as to how I can accurately answer that question as it's pertaining to directly at students. Not kind of funneled through the teacher. Um, you know, most of our outside involvement for students, we invest in the teacher. So the opportunity is there for the students. Um, so I gotta think through how I could, how I could better articulate that, if that makes sense.
I'm just curious, because you have the student council and the IB ambassadors and that kind of thing. But are there specific things that they could really take part in, just for them?
Yeah, um, so we've done things where like a peer counseling program and they came in and worked specifically with the students. Um, and it was an outside resource that came directly to work with them. CPS does have teams that work on student voice that directly work with students. And then, you know, partnering students with other students at other schools. So there are definitely opportunities. Um, and, and we've utilized some of them, but in particular what's in our plan this year, I don't, I just don't have that. At the tip of my tongue to articulate that.
Okay.
Is there anything else on the CIWP or the budget?
Just another question that Cindy, I mean, we think about, um, and I, and this may not be part of the budget, Mira, please educate me. But yearbook, how does that happen to get funded?
Um, no, it's not part of the budget and last year I, so two years ago it was a parent. Um, that parent moved and we didn't have a, a ton of interest. It, it's very hard to coordinate how you do that during the school day and, and all of that. So it was, um, an opportunity that I took on last year. And started it with a group of students that were like a yearbook committee, uh, the, the group of students who helped me with it. Until, you know, the world turned upside down and then I kind of had to scramble and finish what we could, um, for spring. It is, unfortunately, we, we, it is not something we will have this year. Um, there was just really no great way to do it. Um, but ideally, it's a group of students who work with someone to get it moving. I do think it should live with students, but we obviously need a spearhead that's an adult, um, to take it on. And so it's not part of budget, um, usually, but it is part of, like, kind of what Cindy was saying, student voice and engagement. It's also an opportunity for parents who want to get involved in that level, um, who, who can. It's often a scheduling issue, just based on all the different things that go into yearbook and needing to be at school or at an event or. So it is an opportunity for parents to be involved, um, but it is definitely a challenge to figure out the logistics of it. Just one more about professional development for the teachers and so much of it. How will that be prioritized?
How will that be prioritized, looking at it and kind of thinking this is really a lot? How do you come together? Do you do that collaboratively or how do you decide which one's going to come first?
Yeah, those are usually decisions we do make with the teachers. Um, if not specifically every grade level, it's a decision that myself, Ms. McNally, Ms. Perillis, kind of the instructional leadership team would look at and make together. Um, but many times we end up bringing that to the grade level team meetings so that all staff have an, you know, input into it. Um, what I will say kind of offhand is our main focus right now, well, is certainly IB, but embedded within that and kind of the umbrella of everything is, is the equity piece and moving forward with um, all that comes with that. And it's a lot. Um, and in our staff meetings, even last week and this week, you know, we had some very candid conversations about like, what is the success of renaming and what is the fear? And there is a lot of fear around, um, not wanting to people think like, we know it all right now because we don't and it's a learning curve. And so that really, I think, needs to be the focus, um, and, and should be embedded in everything so that teachers feel supported and that we can all continue to have conversations that are meaningful without any, creating a trusting environment so that we're all talking about those things. And we feel capable of saying like, hey, I don't really know how to handle this or I'm not there yet with that. Um, or I'm rewriting a unit because I don't think I should do this. And, you know, that's going to take a lot of work and a lot of time and a lot of relationship building. And I think that has to be the focus of everything we do. Um, yeah.
Is there anything that we can do to help with that?
Uh, that's a good question, Mac. It's a really good question. I think continuing to center our community on it's not overnight change, that teachers aren't, um, superheroes as, as we all, you know, we all love to think they are, but right? Like you don't flip a switch and all of a sudden I'm comfortable talking about the color of my skin and how that impacted me with a parent in my classroom. That just doesn't happen overnight. Um, looking at our curriculum and our units of study from a different lens doesn't happen overnight. So I think the more that we all, um, one, model how to have the conversations, but then two, get others to understand that like things are not done with malice. We all have a sense of urgency, but, but we are not where we need to be right now. And I, I think that the biggest thing LSC can do in helping with that is to continue to share that and spread that message. And if people come to you with concerns or questions that we're very much aligned in, this is a priority. And we need to be able to have open, honest conversations without, um, judgment and defensiveness. I think we'll be able to move that meter more quickly than if we come at it from you did that wrong, you should have known better. Um, I think we'll be able to move i- in a much better direction if we're moving together with the understanding that we, we all want to move together. Um, and it's just, it's going to take time. For many of our, you know, we've, we've all been around a long, a long time and changing belief and practice doesn't happen in, you know, reading one book or going to one PD or, you know, I mean, I know these are all things we know, but then when it comes down to it, being able to center ourselves and remember that, I think is really important.
Yeah, I, I echo that and absolutely agree with that. Everyone needs a lot of space and a lot of grace. And that just trickles down to the kids as well. So everybody needs that time and space to process and develop. So we got your back, teachers. We got you. You're doing great.
Good thing I recorded so they can hear that because that'll mean a lot.
Anyone have any other questions? Uh, again, I thanks, um, thanks again, Mira, for pulling everything together and entertaining the request along the way, like the addition of the separated timeline. I think that was a really nice addition. So thank you for entertaining that when it was asked of you. Um, and thank you, LSC, for all the time that you guys obviously took in reviewing the information and your thoughtful questions and, and consideration, um, specific to our school community. So thanks, everyone involved and not just everyone on this call, but our, our entire school community and especially our teachers who've been involved and the rest of your administrative staff, staff, Mira. So thanks to everyone. Um, we do need to take these votes separately. So I will start with the CIWP. Is there a motion?
I motion. Well, if no one else is going to motion, I'll.
I'll second.
Okay. I don't believe we have any additional discussion. If so, quickly, Kate, did you have something? Oh, okay. I was going to say if quickly, then raise your hand and then your hand popped up. Lori, did you have something or are you guys all voting?
That's my vote.
Okay. Well, let's vote. All in favor, raise your hand. Any oppose? Any abstaining? Uh, Sarah, do you have the count?
Uh, that's unanimous.
Eleven, eleven zero. Yeah, it was unanimous.
Okay. Then the CIWP passes unanimously. Unanimously, is there a motion for the budget?
I motion to approve the budget for the 2021-22 school year.
Sarah second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Any abstaining? You have the count, Sarah?
Just, uh, clarify, Emily, was your hand raised for abstain or, um, no, you, your hand was for approved. Yes. Okay. You know, it's unanimous.
Great. The budget passes unanimously. The next, uh, there's a item here, 21-22 planning, Mira.
Yeah. Um, first Tina, um, and thank you to everyone that I'm, I'm really excited. I think we have some really great plans in place. Tina, I will email you. We have to officially sign something together. Um, or do an electronic signature in this case, but I'll send you that via email.
Okay, sounds good.
Um, I did want to just take a moment kind of under the section of 21-22 planning to share something with everyone. Um, it's certainly been a year of change and we've navigated a lot. I know we've talked a lot tonight about a pandemic and IB authorization, um, kind of the reopening of schools and hybrid learning. And in the midst of it all, the work we've talked a lot about with renaming and equity. Um, feel really good about the budget that we presented and I felt incredibly proud of the CIWP. I think in my 14 years, this is the strongest one we've had. And I, I credit that to the work that went into it from, you know, the team members, um, both parents and staff. Um, as you know, Agassi's been a critical, integral part of my adult life, um, as a teacher, as a parent of two amazing kids who get the opportunity to benefit from our school. Um, and for over a decade, I'm not old or anything, um, as the principal and the leader. And I'm incredibly proud, just beyond proud of the transformation we've really created, um, in my time leading. Um, we've, we've created historic change with our renaming and everything that's come with that. And I'm incredibly proud. Um, I can't say it enough. I tell anyone who wants to talk to me about our school, how proud I am to have served, um, and served as, serve as the leader. Um, but tonight I, I am announcing, um, with mixed emotion, but I do believe in my heart, it is the right time, um, that new leadership be, be brought into our school. And, um, it hasn't been an easy decision, but I wanted to let everyone know that I have accepted a new position in CPS. I am going to be serving as a deputy chief in a new network and, um, will be resigning my position as the proud principal of Agassi's soon to be Tubman. Um, it's incredibly hard. Um, I will miss a lot of different aspects. I look forward to being able to participate in things as a parent now. Um, and to join you in that lived experience as parents, I will continue to be a committed parent. Um, and I just have a lot of, of, of just a great honor to have been able to serve in this role. Um, and I want to thank all of you. Many of you have been on LSC with me for a while, um, have returned to, to revisit the LSC. Um, I did inform my staff. I met with them today as well. And I want to make sure that I say to everyone here tonight, um, that I have an incredible sense of gratitude to Ms. McNally. Who, for many of you don't know, mentored me as a young teacher when I started and really didn't envision herself being assistant principal until I convinced her to do it with me. And she has been the most amazing partner. And I know that between her and all of you and the incredible staff that we have, we are in a great position to continue moving forward and to do great work. Um, I'm really excited about the opportunity that I will have to do work on, on a different level and with more building principles and administrators, um, to have a bigger impact on our district. And I look forward to seeing you guys on the school grounds. Um, and I am here to help you with any process, um, that follows in terms of principal selection. Um, we do have some people here tonight that I will, um, reference. Um, my last official day at Agassi will be Friday, June 4th. Um, I will transition to my new role on Monday, June 7th. I will however, um, be back for graduation. I will be seeing those things through. Um, we will have an administrator in charge with Ms. McNally, uh, that will be Dr. Tenich. Um, so he will be joining our school community to see us through this process, um, with Ms. McNally. And, um, our school, which is located in Network Four. Um, so Chief Clay, who is actually here this evening, will be working closely with you as well as LSC relations. Um, and our LSC facilitator is no longer the same facilitator. So we now have, um, Gregory Gray, who is also on the call this evening. Um, and they will help to see through the selection process. I'm happy to help in any way I can, if wanted. Certainly understand this is a process that our community needs to go through. Um, and if I can be of any support, I a hundred percent will. I am invested in this as a parent, um, as well, and, um, want to make sure that all of our successes continue. So that was the planning for 21-22, friends. Go at it. Um.
So we don't get to vote on this? We can't?
No, there, there's, there's no vote on this part. Um, you get to vote on what your process looks like. Um, but I, I just really want to say it's been a true honor. I honestly, um, am just greatly appreciative of the learning, um, especially this past year with the renaming. And we still have a June meeting together, but, um, I did feel this was the right time to share the information with everyone, um, and give you the time and space to ask questions or to start having conversations. Um, so, yeah.
Well, congratulations, Mira, first of all, and, and thank you for letting us know in the way you did and all the wonderful things you had to say. And thank you. The, 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 um, commitment with which you worked has put us in a really good spot. It's, it's, it's set us up for success and, and I commend you and I really appreciate that. I really, really do. And I appreciate your, you know, you and I have had many conversations through this change process. And, and I appreciate your, your willingness to take a minute and, and do, and look at yourself, you know, that, that's, that's bravery. That takes some bravery and, and that's a tough thing to do. And you, you did it a lot of times in the spotlight. And I think in doing so, you've again, set us up for success and moving forward through this process that we're in the middle of. So again, congratulations and thank you. And it's good to know that we'll still be seeing you around because.
Can't get rid of me that easy. Thank you, Tina. Yeah, really truly thank you. I've learned a lot from you as well and especially over the last year and have valued, valued those conversations greatly.
Same here, Mira. Same here.
I, I just wanted to say congratulations, Mira. I'm really excited for your new role. Um, I, 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 I always would give on the Agassi tours, people being like, Mira's been here a while, don't, don't you think? And I was like, well, she's probably going to get promoted someday, but we're going to be in a good space when she does because she's set us up really well. Um, and so this day has come, which I kind of am telling parents about forever that would come eventually. Um, and so I just, I, um, having been here a long time and seeing the changes that have been made and just where the school has come, uh, the, the big gains that our school has made in the time that you've been at the helm, um, is really important. And, um, I just want to thank you for all your time and your dedication. And, you know, um, we've partnered on a lot of things and I appreciate everything that you've done for the school. So congratulations and we're excited for your next steps forward.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you so much. Definitely. We've been around a while together. I appreciate it.
Okay, um, are there, let's see, whether, next time it's budget transfers and approvals. Did we have anything there? Okay, I didn't believe so. Okay, old business. Did we have anyone sign up for public participation?
Yeah, hold on one second.
Okay, Mac, if you could, while you're getting that, Mac, if you could give us the intro.
Sorry, I was so surprised by Mira's news. Uh, give me one second. Let me pull it up.
No problem.
All right. Uh, members of the public are welcome to make comments and ask questions, but must sign in to participate. The public is called upon to speak in the order they sign in. The public is kindly requested to limit their comments and questions to three minutes. Based on the comments or questions, the principal may address some concerns directly and if necessary, create an action step for the LC to follow up with the involved parties at a future date. While the LSC will do its best to address any comments or questions, when necessary, more time may be needed to adequately address a particular concern.
Thank you. And who do we have, Mira?
We have, I hope I say the last name right, Michelle Singleton.
Mac, do you have time? Do you have time ready?
I've got it.
Okay.
I don't know if Michelle Singleton is here. I don't see her. So I'm going to assume that's a no. Um, we have one other and that was Laura Frans.
Hey, guys. Um, congratulations, Mira. Uh, wow, that's quite the bombshell. Um, so wow. Thank you so much for the, been here for, um, three years now. So just thank you for your leadership. And, um, even most recently, uh, as you know, I've been big on the literacy issue and just taking that up and getting, um, Wilson in that budget before you left. So, uh, I appreciate that greatly. Um, and just to touch on that, um, I just would ask that the LSC, um, when we're looking at equity issues, that one of the, the great, um, ways to close an achievement gap would be to look at our literacy and, um, to try and look at more of an, the, like the Wilson program, the explicit systematic instruction in the tier one. That way we're not leaving behind any of the kids. Like, um, I'd also ask the LSC just to consider about the reading specialist again, um, screening our kids in kindergarten, you know, just to see if, is anyone at risk. Um, and then that way, just getting them flagged. So we're not leaving kids behind. Sometimes it takes till, you know, third grade before things are really recognized that there's an issue and we could, we could recognize that earlier. Um, and especially through, my personal feelings is through that tier one instruction, um, implementing more of that systematic explicit approach. And then that way, if there's any even un, um, unconscious bias of where you think kids should be or, or what they should be doing or what level they're at, you have to start at this, everybody starts at the same level and you work through it together. Um, so I would just really want to plug the, the, um, LSC to kind of consider when you're looking at the, all the equity stuff to try and, um, just think about literacy, especially with the pandemic and even math. I mean, a lot of that is reading in order to do the math. Um, so thank you again, Mira. I appreciate everything that you've done. LSC, all the people that worked on the projects, you guys did a really great job. I enjoyed the presentation tonight. So thank you very much and, uh, good luck.
Thanks, Laura. Um, that was the, those were the only two who signed up for public participation.
Okay. Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is action items and next steps. Um, just to kind of kick this off, I know, um, the last meeting, we had some action items that were targeted for completion by today. So just wanted to revisit those, uh, quickly. One, as a council, we were supposed to provide to Mira information on any additional items that we wanted to pull together for our consideration for the principal evaluation. That was supposed to be to her by 5:00 PM today. And so, just acknowledging that that deadline has passed, and that if you were planning to send anything to her, she should have received it by now. And also, Mira, I think there was no time constraint on this, but one thing we talked about was if there were any additional, if there was any additional information that you wanted to bring to our attention. I know there was the email, so we do have that information, but just wanted to touch base with you and see if there was anything else.
I don't think so. I think when you emailed back and said you could find some of those things in other places, I think that's fine. I did get your email, Tina. So, but I don't, I think, Sarah, I got your initial email, so I think those are, you're the only ones that I did hear from, so should be okay.
Okay. And then also, I also want to follow up regarding the principal evaluation piece. I did, Jose's no longer in our contact, but I did speak with Luis, I think is his name, and it turns out, he could not find that the, that there were pre-approved parent surveys being archived any longer, because they have to go through a process every year of being approved, and so he indicated that they were not, they were no longer available. While I was waiting to hear from Luis, I did reach out to Ms. Williams, is it Williams Ford? Yeah, I did reach out to her, but it was just this morning, because I hadn't heard back from Luis yet, and I haven't heard back from her, but he did indicate that those were not available, and so we're not going to take a vote on anything like about this tonight, but just as we move forward, I think the parent survey piece would be something that we consider and get established and work into the process on the front end as we move into the school year. But for, for this year, it definitely is not out of the question, not necessarily as a principal evaluation piece, but just for an information piece for us, and so I would encourage the members to think through that a bit before our next June meeting, if we want to potentially do some kind of end-of-year survey or something like that. But again, nothing tonight. So, the evaluation pieces that we have already discussed, and any follow-up information or conversations that you want to have with Mira is what we'll move forward with for the evaluation.
And I did just want to say, Tina, I think Gregory Gray, who's on the call tonight, will serve as our LSC facilitator, so he can certainly be someone we follow up with on that also.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mira. I did write his, I did get his name down. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Did you want to recap action items, Mira, or Sarah?
I have a couple things on the list. Have a list of teams and leads available that are part of the C I W P. Have a debrief of what is done and what is learned and what is next, in addition to, you know, as a part of that standing item on the LSC agenda, so just, I guess it's a protocol as we talk about. Updates on the C I W P. And ask Jay at school about equity, and we're sort of just as training and practices, and then getting the signatures on the C I W P.
And then the only, yeah, I had all of, all of those as well. The only thing I would add is, Tina, you and Greg will need to connect on kind of process for principal selection, and then Chief Clay of Network 4 can be brought into that, you know, if there's questions for him as well, just as kind of the network chief that will be serving Agassi School, our Tubman School in July. But, oh, there, there's Mr. Clay. So he can certainly be brought in as well, but as, as chair and with, with Mr. Clay and Greg to kind of craft that process, or at least start thinking about what that process and timeline is going to look like.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
We're here to serve you, so whatever you need, we're here. Welcome, everyone, and hi, my name is William Clay, Chief of Schools for Network 4, and to welcome everyone to the network, and anything you may need to help you with this transition to make it smooth, we're here to, to provide that, that support. And also want to take an opportunity, I don't mean to hijack your meeting here, sorry. Principal Weber, thank you so much for your years of service and dedication to the district and to this community specifically. We look forward to all the great things you'll be doing for the district in the future. So, thank you, everyone, and I'm here if there's any other questions that are, that are pondering, or we're still processing, you know, the announcement. I will put my email in the chat for you, so that way feel free to reach out.
And I would do the same. I'll put my information in the chat strand as well. Probably one of the things that once the council talks amongst itself and identifies when they want to actually begin the process, then we'll, we'll meet, look at some potential dates, particularly to start off, just reviewing the training module, which is Module 6, for those of you who have not completed it as of yet, so that way you get an understanding of what the process will look like in its entirety. So I didn't, I don't want to take up too much time, but I'll definitely put my email and my cell number in the chat box, so anyone can contact me with questions, and I stated, once you guys talk amongst yourselves and agree on a time where you want to begin the process, then we'll reconvene and do the training session, and then we'll support you guys from there.
Can I ask Gregory one question? Working through some of the modules that I'm just gonna get there, but we have six months from when we were seated, which was our first meeting where we were LSC, with the, on the LSC, correct?
Well, it was six months from the day you were seated, which would have been January 11th.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure that was the day that we were seated. Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gray, I have a question for you, too. Obviously, a lot has happened in CPS between last week and now for us today. What is the pool looking like? It's, I know a lot of people have left CPS. Do you know, just like off the top of your head, how many principal positions are open at this time? So I'm just trying to think about who's our competition, and what's that looking like right now?
Well, the CPS bulletin, which is the personnel bulletin that posts all of the principal vacancies, and I can look it up as we speak. They will identify all the vacancies that exist currently within the district. They'll have them posted by school. Currently, there are 15 vacancies in the district, combined between both elementary as well as high schools.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
One follow-up question. I just looked on the CPS website. There's an LSC reference guide that's posted, that's marked 2018 to 2020. Is that the one we should use? I don't see a 2020 to 2022 on.
The 2020 through 2022 one is the one that's currently being developed, so the 1821 is the most current one that is available.
All right, so that's what we should use to guide our principal selection process, because it looks like.
Yes, sir. Chapter 6.
Thank you.
The module to Ms. Emily Holbert, the Module 6 LSC Training. Actually, we, we just had one yesterday. I think we, on our training schedule, we do have additional trainees coming up during the month of May, as well as the month of June and July. So, if you did not receive a calendar or invitation to attend the monthly trainings, again, just shoot me an email to my email address, and I'll make sure you get included onto that list. You should have received it, because we sent it out to all LSC members en masse, where we produce the training calendar, and we draw those email addresses from the LSC dashboard, and I have not looked at it for your school, but I'll just say double check to make sure that you indeed have an email address attached to your name in the dashboard. That's where we pull the information from when we reach out to make contact to LSC members.
I'll send you an email. I'm still, and I was, I've been trying for a few months. I'm still not receiving any emails. I've completed all my modules, so I know I'm in the system, because I'm all caught up and done all that, but I'll send you an email, too. You can get me some emails. Thank you. Again, for looking that up right away. I like that.
Yeah, not a problem.
Lori, you may want to reach out, probably connect with Mira and see if you're emailed, because I get the, I have the training modules and everything, but in a conversation with Luis a couple days ago, he actually read the email back to me that was put in that system, and it was off by a letter. So that's why I haven't been getting emails as well, but I'm able to train and everything, so you should probably connect, because it's at the school level, so.
All right, I will check all those different routes.
There you go.
Thank you.
And for Nicholas Hall, I see they put the training portal link there. That is an online training only without a live presenter. We also do LSC trainings that we've been doing since the month of March with our staff doing the live presentations, where participants can indeed react, participate, and be interactive with the trainer from our office. So the CPS LSC Training Portal, that is strictly an online session with no live presenter. That's merely a read and continue forward, but we do offer live trainings ourselves that we do with live presenters, and in the case of schools that are undergoing principal selection, we do them school-specific. So that's what I'm saying, once the school has assembled and identified, yes, we are ready to begin, then we'll set up a day that's convenient for the council, and we'll do the session with exclusively gesture LSC members.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. I think that would be really helpful, given that the module training that you mentioned, some of that information is out of date. So I would also, you know, where we can, you know, participate in those face-to-face trainings, just, yeah.
Absolutely.
There is a module training on May 25th at several different times if you sign up.
10:00 AM and 4:00 PM.
I'll also throw out that raise your hand and the LSC connection. Also do all the module trainings. They're not the official LSC, but they're the, they've been officially trained to teach the modules as well, and so that's another option, and I can send you any dates for those trainings.
Okay, anyone have anything else? Yeah, the last thing I just want to say is that I have updated the password for the LSC email and shared it with Sarah, and so that is again, as an avenue for feedback, like we discussed at the last meeting, so that has been done, and as agreed, anything that comes there will be shared with the rest of the council.
What, real quick, can we add as an action item? It doesn't, I mean, we have obviously a lot to do right now, but can we put down, Laura has spoken twice, the parent has spoken twice about the literacy, and maybe we could have just a little dedicated time in an LSC meeting to talk about how our literacy program works, and when we're using Wilson, and when we're using what's-her-face, and pockets. Maybe we could just put that out there, that we are going to have time as an LSC to discuss that?
I'm, I'm not sure what that looks like moving forward, since, since we'll be transitioning to a new principal, but it's, yeah, it's definitely on the radar, for sure. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, the next regular meeting will be, virtual meeting, will be June 2nd at 6:00 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
There's a second? Okay, all in favor of adjourned? Oppose? Abstain? I'm guessing it was unanimous?
It's unanimous.
Okay, thanks, everyone, for a very informative meeting tonight. Take care, have a good evening and the rest of your week.
Congratulations, Mira. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night.